We will now call the regular meeting of the Lumpoke City Council for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Please rise and join me in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with Pastor Bernie Fetterman.
Well, dear God, on behalf of our city and our leaders, we pause to offer gratitude for your blessings, your grace upon our lives. I stand here certain that all that is good comes from your hand and your heart. So I say thank you, God. I thank you for the enhancement to our parks, for the provision of the funds made available for those enhancements, for updates and upgrades to our city that enhance the quality of life. And while we still have areas to tackle, together we will. And with your guidance, we'll see our way forward, just as we have as a city for 135 years. Be with our mayor, our city council, our city manager and our staff, and the employees we are so fortunate to have, serving us. Be with our fire chief and our police chief. And we ask that you watch over our police and our fire personnel. Protect them as they protect us. I pray for this council meeting tonight, even with a lighter agenda, to give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on items before them this night and in the future. May every decision be righteous in your sight, for the benefit of our city and for your glory. And God, give strength and wisdom to the parents and guardians in our city who care for children and youth. Not an easy task, but would you show your presence and love to them? Bring peace to their homes and continue to watch over our children and our youth, the ones in this town that, well, might be finding their way to evil and harm. Give them a righteous path forward and the courage to make right decisions and choices that will positively impact their futures. Bless us again, I pray. May we be one nation, one city, under you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Albro, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're encouraging everybody to go online and take the road safety plan survey. It's available online until the 11th. There's also an interactive pinpoint that you can actually show areas of concern that may need improving. The Lumpoke Library has also issued a call to the artists and for artwork to be displayed next year at the Grossman Gallery. And you have until this Thursday to submit it, so you need to get those in soon, I guess, huh? Registration starts for youth basketball through the Lumpoke Parks and Rec. You can get ahold of them if you want more details. I'd like to take a moment and thank CJ Berry for being our utility director. CJ has done an outstanding job and we'll truly miss him. He's going to the city of Colton and we wish him the best of luck. During his absence, Brad Wilkie will be acting utility director, and I encourage you to extend all courtesies. I'd also like to congratulate Sergeant McGany on his retirement. It's not often you see somebody do 27 years in one place and retire in the same place. And we wish him and his wife Olivia and his family the best of wishes, and that's all I have.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. If you would like to speak to item one or two on consent calendar, you're welcome to come forward. And you will have three minutes. The number to call in is 805-875-8201. Again, consent calendar is considered to be routine and enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise or call in, we will close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council for either discussion, polling, or a motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move. We accept consent calendar.
All right, Councilmember Cordova.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. And consent calendar passes 5-0. We'll have our first staff presentation for this evening from our Park and Recreation Project Coordinator, Jim Madoro, to provide a brief update on the current projects at certain parks and facilities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jim Madoro. I'm with the City and Parks, and I'm the project coordinator. And I'm presenting an update tonight on all the parks and recreation capital projects. So here we have many active projects. Listed here are the various locations and projects going on now, recently, or coming soon. Here we have the Aquatic Center has two capital projects coming soon. The first to begin soon and be completed towards the end of 2023 is the installation of two new dehumidification units. While council approved appropriations for this project back in April 2022, the project has had many delays, one of which was the supply of the actual dehumidification units. We are not at the point where purchasing will be soliciting bids, hopefully in the next month. The second project is the replacement of 36 ceiling panel tracks and motors for the retractable roof system at the swimming pool. Installation is scheduled for February of '24. So if you look at the picture here, on the left side is the roof with the new monitoring and tracks. The right side is going to be the dehumidification that will be installed. Now here we have College Park. Prop 68 Complete Renovation Red Project is estimated to start construction in March of 2023. We are hoping to be at a planning commission here in next month and out to bid by the December of this year. And, next? So we solicited input from the community and we got over 400 responses. And we received that the majority preferred design that you see here, that was 71% of the vote. Next? Now we have here is the Ryan Park Pickle and Tennis Courts. Ryan will be in a construction zone beginning today. They started construction on the pickleball court. Hopefully, also this week, there will be the playground and a new fitness area will also start this week. If you did not already see any equipment out there that's fenced in right now, so we're preparing for that. So by early November, we will have eight new pickleball courts and resurfaced tennis courts for our community to enjoy. We've installed new LED lights on the tennis courts in July of this year, utilizing electric energy efficiency grant funding. And new LED lighting will be installed at completion of the new pickleball courts. And you may have noticed some equipment, like I said, at Ryan Park. And we're excited that the playground replacement work is scheduled to begin this week. And the community will be able to enjoy the pictured new playground by end of November of this year. Pioneer Park was funded through federal direct appropriations funding. We are currently working on conceptual design plans, refining a project scope of work, and the project budget for improvements to include, next, the playground area, replacing the existing playground equipment and adding a new fitness area. And these are the options that we have chosen for that playground. And there's a few of them. And the last one, and also we're going to have baseball field improvements at the Babe Ruth Field at Pioneer Park. We'll be removing and replacing the existing turf and infield brick dust, performing irrigation improvements and replacing the backstop and left, right field perimeter fencing to commence after next season. We're working with Babe Ruth on scheduling to limit the impact of their program. Here, there will be improvements at the library as well. We are currently working on a conceptual design which is being reviewed with the library staff and design consultant. The improvements are proposed to include expansion of the parking lot with covered parking for the bookmobile, outdoor patio reconstruction to allow for expansion of programming, and landscaping improvements to improve water efficiency and meet current requirements from landscape regulations. We are very early in the planning for this project, and once we have conceptual design with cost estimates, we will have a better idea of the implementation timeframe. But it is an exciting perspective project. Next, we are awarded, we were awarded grant funding for the installation of HVAC systems to allow for the Anderson Recreation Center to be an operational clean air center when air quality is poor. So this is on the left. We're going to put a new AC unit in the gymnasium outside with ductwork coming up the wall and hopefully maybe coming into the gymnasium in that fashion on the right-hand side. And this is going to be the removal in the gymnasium of the existing units. And then three condensers for AC in the administration area in front of the wall right there. But it will probably have a fence around it to cover those when it's installed. And the conceptual scope of work for the RFP should be completed by this October. River Park campsites, the conceptual design from our consultant, RHA, completed for RFP at the end of this September. And this will be 13 new campsites. And also with it, we'll have the alternative bid solicited for a new bathroom and showers. Depending on the cost of those improvements will determine the inclusion of the restroom showers in this phase of the project. And then we have JM Park, the new restroom. The existing restroom concession stand facility is scheduled to be demolished and replaced July 2024. We have all the state and county health approvals. The facility is being fabricated and should be ready for installation in July. Demo will begin of the existing facility and site work coordinated with the, to minimize impacts of the Little League program at the park. Now, Centennial Park, if you haven't seen it, go look at it. It is complete, done. Temporary fence removal we have right now will be removed tomorrow and to, now that the site is taken, and we can let the community enjoy their new downtown park. And I thank you for your attention, and I'm excited for all the new projects that are starting soon. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Madoro. Councilmember Starbuck.
Any update on doing something with the Ryan Park stage?
Not at this time.
Beatty Park Parking Lot Banks, that was on the last update we had received.
I think.
All the squirrel damage, et cetera, et cetera. We were going to put concrete or some to prevent further.
I think that is, we're still looking at that, central plans and so forth, but Mario can update you on that a little better.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mario Goril, Parks and Recreation Manager. Beatty Park, we are currently doing a lot more borough blocking up there, and we're going to replace some asphalt, and the parking lots should be open by the end of October. That's our plan.
Hey, Mario, while you're up there, do you know anything about doing anything with the stage at Ryan Park?
From the last council meeting, it was, it was talked about that three different options, but there wasn't one that was specific to moving forward. Then the cheaper model was then to upgrade than the current stage. And I believe it was in our CIP projects of those options, but then they weren't funded for this budget cycle. So when, we can come back into that on the next budget.
Any more questions, concerns? Councilmember Ball.
I don't have a question or a concern. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. And thank you for the thoughtful investment throughout the community in our parks. It's not everything, but it's something. So I'm really excited to see the improvement in our community. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. All right, our next presentation is from our outgoing utility director, Charles Berry, to inform us what the state of California's cap and trade program, the market-based emissions trading system setup is to help reduce greenhouse gases and emissions and how we can utilize it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. CJ Berry, your utility director. Tonight, staff will be providing a presentation on cap and trade, also known as the Carbon Credit Program. Next slide, please. Tonight, we'll cover background and history, what is an allowance, how proceeds can be used, what are other agencies doing, current fund balance of the Greenhouse Gas Fund, and staff recommendations for those funds. Next slide. Little background in history, the cap and trade program is a key element of California's energy strategy. It was enacted by AB 32 and requires a return of GHG emissions to below 1990 levels. The cap and trade is a market-based emissions trading system that establishes a declining cap on emissions and distributes tradable allowances under the cap. And it's a market-based approach to lessen the financial burden of decarbonization while protecting rate payers. Next slide, please. The market began operation in 2012 and continues legislatively until 2030, at which time the city will cease to receive allowances under cap and trade. The auction proceeds, therefore, are a temporary revenue stream. The cap and trade program applies to all utilities in California as defined by 17 CCR Section 95892. Cap and trade allowances are granted annually by CARB and must be used in compliance with statutory regulations. And it's important to note, these are not a direct cost to rate payers, and they're intended to lessen costs to rate payers for GHG reduction initiatives. Next slide, please. So what is an allowance? An allowance is a commodity that's bought and sold in the market. Each allowance is equivalent to one metric ton of carbon dioxide emissions. Each year, CARB lots fewer allowances, which is known as the declining cap. This establishes a price on carbon emissions in the economy. The overarching goal of the cap and trade program is to use proceeds to fund the GHG reduction strategies with a market-based approach. And each auction, the floor price increases, making an allowance more expensive. Next slide, please. How can the proceeds be used? The proceeds for allowances sold at auction can be used for the development and operation of renewable energy projects, the purchase of energy from renewable resources, investment in energy efficiency, including rebates, retrofits, demand response, and EV infrastructure, fuel switching, including electrification of transportation, the removal and reduction of sulfur hexafluoride, projects to support integration of renewable resources, system upgrades to support renewable energy projects, other projects with demonstrable reduction in GHG emissions, and lastly, they can provide a non-volumetric rebate to customers. Next slide, please. Next slide. So what are other agencies doing? Right now, Roseville is investing heavily in renewable energy purchases, as well as advanced metering infrastructure and LED streetlight retrofits. Reading is investing in energy efficiency, fuel switching, and building electrification. Next slide, please. Santa Clara, renewable energy purchases, SF6 mitigation and fuel switching. Alameda, renewable energy, SF6 mitigation and electrification. Next slide. One more, please. Port of Oakland is investing heavily in renewable energy and banking proceeds for future uses to be determined. Shasta Lake is investing in energy efficiency, LED lighting retrofits and EV infrastructure. BIGGS is investing in renewable energy development, fuel switching and EV structure. Well, last, Lodi is investing in renewable energy purchases, SF6 mitigation and EV infrastructure. As of June 30th, 2023, the unaudited restricted fund balance stands at approximately $4 million. With that, staff recommends the funds be programmed for the following: upgrading the metering assets to advanced metering infrastructure, purchasing of renewable energy, SF6 mitigation, electrifying transportation, electrifying homes, investing in energy efficiency, pursuing grant opportunities where matching funds are required, and banking funds for future uses. Next slide. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. I'm prepared and able to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Starbuck.
What do you propose Lumpoke does?
Well, I think the list that was mentioned in the previous slide was not intended to be exhaustive, but I think investing heavily in the advanced metering infrastructure is certainly a step in the right direction, while also investing heavily in energy efficiency.
I'm going to bring it up. I mean, I didn't see too much on there about rebates for the people that own the company.
Correct.
Do we get more bang for our buck going this route? Or do you think if we put it on a ballot that the people that own the company would vote to get some money?
Well, I wouldn't want to speculate how the public would vote. But what I can tell you, I think it's something that we look at, what is the best and highest return on that investment? And anything that we rebate the customers today will put upward pressure on rates tomorrow.
Mr. Berry, for the public to understand, why did you mention what those particular cities are doing?
Well, it was an attempt to survey the NCPA utilities to find out how they're spending proceeds from the auction.
So our sister communities within the organization we're members of?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, secondly, I do appreciate you mentioning electrification of transportation because I'm not sure how much our community is aware of the unfunded mandate that has come from the state about replacing fleet, no matter the fleet, within a city with electrical vehicles. And so that's a cost that we will need to burden, and $4 million isn't going to replace all of the fleet that exists, not just electrical division, but all of the fleet that exists within our.
Correct. $4 million will not get us very far in electrifying our transportation, or at least even as we pursue fuel switching.
Right. But it is helpful because we can use it as matching grants. We can use it to implement infrastructure to support all of that additional electrical vehicles that we're going to be required to build and additional ways to implement it within the community so that we, as a city, might be prepared when the mandates come down for electrification of vehicles compared to outside our community.
That is correct, and we are under those legislative mandates to electrify the fleet. And that includes using potentially the greenhouse gas funds for deployment of public charging.
Any other questions about the process?
I just had a quick question. So when you say, you know, some of these cities, you mentioned Lodi and Shasta Lake, a few others. When you say EV, electric vehicle infrastructure, is that the same thing under your staff recommendations of electrification of transportation? Or is that too little?
The two terms could be used interchangeably, but I did, I did make it a point to delineate between the two because EV infrastructure could be all inclusive of building out public and private charging as well as converting fleet. So unfortunately, when I performed the survey of the NCPA utilities, there wasn't time to get into the nitty-gritty about exactly how they were spending every dollar, but those were the common themes that were shared with the sister agencies.
In layman's terms, if we were to, as a city, look at talking about increasing electric vehicle infrastructure for the public-facing side of things, how would that, or might that, benefit us in the context of getting credits or being in compliance with what the state's pushing us towards?
Well, there, I think there's no secret here that the state is pushing hard to do away with internal combustion engines. And as we move closer and closer towards those critical legislative dates, if we're not hitting targets, there will be additional mandates that come down. So really, I think there's an opportunity for the city to get in front of this and start building those public-private partnerships for deployment of charging.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for the time you have worked with us and for a lot of the improvements and also putting us on the right path for many things that we were behind on. So your time with us has been well-spent, and we do appreciate the work you've done. So good luck on the next step in your career.
Thank you for the kind words. I appreciate them, and it's been a pleasure working with this council.
Thank you. All right. Here is your opportunity for oral communications for the second time in the meeting. If you have a matter you would like to speak to us on, you may come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. This is your chance for oral communication before the close of the meeting. So if there is something you would like to say, 805-875-8201, or come to the podium for your three minutes.
Nick Nikelenko, resident of Lumpoke. So since our last city council meeting, there has been one unsolved homicide. No suspects to speak of, no leads, absolutely nothing. There's been a body that was found outside of a local bank that's undergoing renovations, coast hills. There are speculation as to who that person was. I will get into that. And lastly, on August 27th, around 6:00 PM in the evening, a probably homeless person, I'm not going to say whatever they were or not, was discovered deceased outside of our local hospital. They were on the property. They were found curled up in a blanket right next to the building. They were there for maybe two days. To me, that is unthinkable, unthinkable. That somebody would be laying out there for two days without anybody checking on them, without somebody bringing them something to eat, something to drink. To me, this is, I can't comprehend that. And I believe this matter needs to be looked into, and there need to be answers for this community because this was somebody who, it doesn't matter what their condition was. it doesn't matter what their condition was, what their way of living was, this was somebody who was part of our community, and they were laying outside our hospital for two days. And that needs to be answered for. Thank you very much.
Okay. Kimberly Klay, citizen, born and raised. I want to speak on the, on the, uh, deceased person and, and, and send my prayers and thoughts and prayers are with them and their family, but, um, I drove bass, I, I went by there today, and from where I saw that the person might have been, um, they weren't visible. They weren't near a, a, a entryway, it was on the side of the building. You would have to go out of your way to see this person. And one of the things I'd like to say is, I would, I would challenge people to uplift our city and not focus on the negative and try to find negative things in it. Of course, we have things we need to work on. Acknowledge that, but don't disparage. Um, this is, uh, a, um, on social media, it came from the news person or the person, I can't think of the name of that, Nora Wallace, she's, she does what Samantha does. Um, and she posted this. Here is a statement from L V M C Chief Executive Officer Steve Popkin. I would like to provide some certif, clarification for those who are appropriately, appropriately concerned about the homeless gentleman who passed away outside the Lompoc Valley Medical Center. He received emergency department treatment and at L V M C on August twenty-fifth. He had serious medical issues that required further diagnosis and further treatment. Due to HIPAA regulations, I cannot provide details about the nature of his medical conditions. He was offered the needed treatment, and emergency department medical providers strongly encouraged him to receive the, this treatment. Notwithstanding the encouragement, the patient refused all treatment. Hospitals are not legally permitted to force treatment on patients without their consent. The patient left the emergency department against medical advice. In addition, the patient declined offers from L V M C staff to help establish housing or shelter, and declined offers to connect him with other community resources. This entire situation and the gentleman's passing are very regrettable, and we wish we were able to intervene sooner. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Steve Popkin, C E O, Lompoc Valley Medical Center. Just came to speak to that incident and answer any questions that may exist from the council. Thank you to the person who brought up the issue and to the, um, response that you just provided. You know, I won't rehash what, um, I said and was just, um, uh, read, uh, about the care that the person either received or we tried to have the person receive in the emergency department. Uh, he did leave, as far as, uh, and that's correct, uh, the first person who said that the person, uh, the individual was, that was on August twenty-fifth that the person was in the emergency department. Person was found on August twenty-seventh, and you're correct that it was in an area that wasn't readily visible. In fact, we have lots of security cameras, and unfortunately, um, they don't cover that specific area, so as far as the timing of when that all occurred, uh, unable to determine. But the person was found by one of our employees on August twenty-seventh, when that employee uh, saw the person, went up and kind of inspected, then told our house supervisor, our nursing supervisor, and immediately nine-one-one was called to address that situation. I know on the social media was speculated that the person had been there, you know, two or three days. The actual amount of time the person was there is undetermined. Um, I think, you know, again, there's kind of, I have to walk a fine line on what I can disclose and not, but I think based on the condition of the individual when they were found, it might be a reasonable assumption that they had been there for an extended period of time, but just, uh, suffice it to say that that would not necessarily be an accurate assumption. I can't really say too much more than that. So the person obviously was, well, was there some period of time, we don't know how long that was. Um, that's, you know, it's a coroner, coroner's situation right now, we'll find out, um, ultimately, as long as it's disclosed from the coroner. But, um, of course, if we would have known the person was there, we would have done everything in our power to, uh, assist the person, at minimum, call the police department for assistance and dealing with the situation, um, you know, earlier than we did. So again, it's very sad situation all the way around, and I can answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we'll go to the callers. Ma'am, are you still there?
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council Chamber, you have three minutes to give your public comment, please go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to know why, um, the subdivision in the village, the streets look like very nice and they're well paved, and why isn't the home, the three home divisions behind, um, Albertson, really need paving and they are not paved, and they look terrible.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, I just wanted to know why.
Okay, thank you. The, the council can't a, address you directly, but this is a time to give your public comment, so they've heard that, the comment. Thank you.
Okay, is there any way, I, oh, well, is there any way I can write a letter and find out?
Yes, you can go ahead and, and contact the city council members directly, um, and we have that information on the website. Um, we, we can get that to you. If you, if you want to call City Hall tomorrow as well, we can put you in touch.
Yeah, 'cause I don't have a computer, I'm eighty years old.
Oh, well, yes, call, please call City Hall tomorrow. Do you have the number?
Thank you. Thank you very much, you have a nice evening.
You too, thank you.
Do we have any more callers? Okay. Anyone else, um, would like to come forward? All right, seeing none, we will close oral communications. Did we have any written communications?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. All right, um, council, Councilmember, uh, Codorva, anything to report?
No reports.
Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilmember Ball?
Oh, just a couple of quick things. Um, I wanted to say thank you to C J Berry for being such a great utility director. I know we only had you for a couple of years, but we got a really good one, we're sorry to see you go. Thank you for enlightening me as to some things that we should keep on our radar in the future, and I hope you'll stay in touch with us. Thank you for your service for Lompoc. Um, also wanted to congratulate, uh, George Magania, who just retired twenty-seven years. I got a little bit close with him 'cause he, uh, was willing to open his mouth and tell me lots of things and educate me on the Explorer Program and lots of things that they've been doing at the police department to try to bring back some community policing, some community outreach, so, uh, big fan of his, and I hope he's enjoying retirement. He can't be older than forty-seven, so I'm not sure how he retired so early. And the last thing was, I had a great time at the chamber dinner. Uh, Councilwoman Cordova was there as well, uh, Mayor couldn't make it, but I know she wanted to be there, uh, but it was a great event. It was really good to see Monty Montgomery win the Small Business of the Year, that's in my district in downtown Lompoc, and, uh, it was great to see Shelby Wild, uh, win Woman of the Year. Forgot the gentleman who won Man of the Year, but it was a great community event. Uh, everyone was uplifted, and it was exciting to see so much progress in our city at the small business level. So that's all I got, thank you.
Councilmember Vega?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, I attended the Santa Barbara County of Area Government's, um, monthly meeting as chair, as well as our Northern California Power Agency meetings. This month was also the Legislative and Regulatory Committee Meeting, which I am the chair of, as well as the regular meetings that I attend. And then this month also was our quarterly Cal Cities Santa Barbara County Mayors and City Managers Meeting in Galita this time. Um, it was a, a special meeting because the U S Secretary of HUD actually was in the area and visited with us, and so we had the opportunity to speak with her about issues we were having regarding housing, housing for, um, low-income and homeless, and then tour the conversion that the City of Galita is doing to one of their hotels to house homeless. So I just want to say thank you to, um, the City of Galita for organizing that and for Secretary Fudge for visiting our community and giving us an opportunity to chat with her. You heard about Officer Magania's retirement, um, he spent twenty-seven years with us, so again, um, it just goes to show you, we're a very special community where you can spend your entire career, um, both living and being raised here and then contributing back to it and making it a better community. So we congratulate him on his well-deserved retirement and, um, support his family in the next phase and adventure of their lives. The other winners, um, Lester Evans won the Man of the Year from the Chamber, um, Annual Dinner, and Small Business of Excellence for this year was Florianos, and then Volunteer of the Year was Oscar Diaz, who works for the Community Bank of Santa Maria, but the Lompoc branch. So congratulations to them, as well as the Woman of the Year and the small new business that Councilmember Ball already mentioned. You heard a couple of the things the city is doing, um, from a city manager, but we also have our Housing Element, um, Public Hearing on September thirteenth at the Planning Commission. So this is the final round before we submit, um, for official sign-offs, so if you want to provide input, that is a public hearing that will happen next week. Youth Basketball's Early Bird Registration has began today, so if you'd like more information or to participate in that, you can call Parks and Rec at eight seven five eight one zero zero or stop by the Anderson Rec Center. I want to say thank you to the Parks and Recs Division as well as Surf Connection for sponsoring the skate park competition last month. They had over twenty-eight participants, and I just want to say congratulations to all of you for competing and for winning, but just for really keeping something that's been going for, um, over twenty years going, and it's a really, a special, uh, event in our community. And then, last but not least, um, the Lompoc Valley Botanic and Horticultural Society is having a meeting on the seventeenth of this month, that's a Sunday, from two to four P M. And their membership meeting, you're more than welcome to attend at the city's botanical garden, and how many of us knew we had one? It is the Burton Mesa Chaparral Garden up at the Hancock Campus here in Lompoc, it's right behind. So if you attend the meeting, you'll be able to meet, potentially join, but also get a guided tour of it. So I welcome the community to discover our own botanical garden, which I didn't know we had, and if you'd want more information, you can go to their new website at L V, B as in boy, H S dot org, or L V B H S dot org. Thank you all for being here tonight. I know it feels like a short meeting, but this is kind of the ebb and flow of things. I'm sure the next meeting will be packed of things we didn't get on this agenda. Thank you all. We'll adjourn to the next council meeting on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M.